Let's go. Alex number two says we're ready to go, so we're gonna go. I'd like to call this May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, special meeting in order. May I have a roll call, Madam Treasurer?
That's that's me.
Present.
Doctor Goodwin.
Here.
Doctor Bailey.
Absent. So we'll let the record reflect when Doctor Bailey comes in.
Okay. Mister Lacy.
Here.
Mister Walker.
Present.
Miss Reina.
Present.
You stand for the national, pleasured belief. I'm just saying, when you win, you win. Pursuant to section one two one dot two two G two of the Ohio Vice Code, a motion of this board going to executive session. This meeting is being held to consider the appointment and employment of a public employee as well as to confer with an attorney involving pending or imminent court actions. Do I have a second? Is there a second? Do we have any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Miss Wick.
Yes.
Doctor Goodwin.
Yes.
Doctor Bailey, he's not here.
He's coming in. Let the record reflect, Doctor Bailey, is any attendance?
He said yes, okay.
He said yes.
Mister Lacy.
Yes.
Mister Walker.
Yes.
Miss Reina.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
We refer to the board conference room. I'm saying, we can. Let the record show that the Board of Education at Dayton City School District has just completed an executive session during which it considered the appointment and employment of a public employee as well as conferred with an attorney around pending or imminent court action. May I have a second to return to our special meeting?
Second.
Moving to second, may we have a vote?
I will take Goodwin. President Smith.
Yes.
Miss Wick.
Yes.
Doctor Goodwin.
Yes.
Doctor Bailey.
Yes.
Mister Lacy.
Yes.
Mister Walker.
Yes.
Miss Reina.
Yes.
Did I miss Miss Wick?
You didn't miss, I said yes.
Yeah. Seven yeses.
All right, now let me move to superintendent recommendations.
President Smith, my first recommendation is I recommend approval of the following administrative salary schedule.
I'd like to make a motion that we freeze the administrative and DSS salary schedule, including a freezing of the current level of the pension pickup with the intent that the superintendent, treasurer, and business manager present a new salary schedule no later than August thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Second. It's been moved to second, do we have any questions on the motion? Any comments? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Miss Wick.
Yes.
Doctor Goodwin.
Yes.
Doctor Bailey.
Yes.
Mister Lacy.
Yes.
Mister Walker.
Yes.
Miss Reina.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Your next recommendation, please, sir.
I recommend approval of the following human resources, section B.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this recommendation in line with the last one with the administrators being at the same freeze.
Second. It's been moved to second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Miss Wick.
Yes.
Doctor Goodwin.
Yes.
Doctor Bailey.
Yes.
Mister Lacy.
Yes.
Mister Walker.
Yes.
Miss Reina.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Next recommendation, please.
I recommend the approval of the following one-year administrative contracts.
I'll move.
I'll second it. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Miss Wick.
Yes.
Doctor Goodwin.
Yes.
Doctor Bailey.
Yes.
Mister Lacy.
Yes.
Mister Walker.
Yes.
Miss Reina.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Next recommendation?
My next recommendation is, actually, I recommend that the board have a discussion about option one or two, and then I'll make the recommendation, because it says approval, option one or two, and that's been a discussion.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
Can we get this recommendation once our business manager is in, since it's actually under the business manager?
Say what?
This approving either of these under the business manager?
So you're saying you want to?
I mean, they still can do the, tell us what they, what they have.
But you don't want to move it under the agenda, under business manager's recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we're still, we're just moving on the agenda under what it would be business manager. The work continues.
Yeah.
The name continues on a different section under the agenda.
Business manager, gonna get your first recommendation.
And if I could make, if you could just tell us which one of these two options that you want?
Go there, option one, just go best served. Is it a mic though?
Nope.
Thank you, Alex number two.
Okay, so you said you like option one? Okay.
Appreciate that, and I will say I appreciate the work that you and Chief Jones have gone into, and I appreciate the flexibility in working with Ahmet and the treasurer on that, so I appreciate that.
I have one question for you.
Doctor Goodwin.
Does this mean now that Stivers have its own building that they can have football? It's all I want there, for people who can hear me, said that would be great, so thank you.
I got a little football player over there.
One more question for you, does that mean all we need to do is post the coaching position for them to have it?
At the end of the day, there's a, there's a host of other things that we would have to put together in terms of going through OSHA, but I will work with Chief Jones.
I don't think they would be in OSHA for the first year, because they haven't been established.
Because you, they haven't applied to have that sport, so that would be a different piece.
Well, can I just make the request that you guys look into, if this is something that the students want to do, I think they should have the right to do it.
Most definitely.
If it's something that they don't want to do, that is okay as well.
Absolutely.
By giving them the option.
Okay.
Having that piece, and I think what hap, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Jones, because they have not petitioned to have that, that's that one-year grace waiting period to apply it, and with that, then you're not in OSHA, but you're gonna have that sport.
Should I put?
Yeah, I'll get more information through OSHA, but we would treat it like a club start now, similar to what we're doing with flag football for the girls. And then when we feel like we can move forward, we're making it an official varsity sport, then we can select it as an offering for cyber sports.
Sounds great.
Sounds great.
One more question for the treasurer.
Go ahead.
Can they afford this option?
We need to calculate it, I didn't calculate it yet.
Okay, so if we can just get that pending, or Madam Treasurer confirming for us that we can do it, that would be great.
I just want to, just want to clarify, so the five, the high schools each will have a coordinator, and then you will still have the two associate A.D.s.
Yeah, we'll still have the two associates for Belmont and Stivers, and then we'll have four athletic coordinators.
Okay, that's right, okay.
So every building would have somebody in there.
Right.
And then you'd have the three site coordinators.
And then the two coordinators that's doing the other two.
The three site coordinators will serve for the standalone middle schools, and then we also have Welcome Stadium Site Coordinator.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Jones.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you having the district meet over there as well this week. Look, look forward to seeing what we collected on parking revenue. Bring money into the district. Oh, Dr. Lawrence, for you with that one, is there a need for you to have a vote on that? Being that part of that position is part of the salary schedule that we're looking at as well?
Yeah, I think I would need to make a recommendation for option one.
That's fine.
And then, of course, that'll be rolled into the pending deadline of August thirty first for the salary schedule. But we have a, we have, I'm sure Doctor Jones and his team are gonna get lots of applications, we have, we have a range.
Okay.
So move.
It's been moved, whoever, I'll second that.
I was out there first.
You got a Buckeye shirt on, I'll second that. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Miss Wick. Miss Wick.
She's not.
Doubt.
Oh. Okay, Doctor Goodwin.
Yes.
Doctor Bailey.
Yes.
Mister Lacy.
Yes.
Mister Walker.
Yes.
Miss Reina.
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you, does this conclude your recommendations?
President Smith, President Smith, this concludes my recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Lawrence. Madam Treasurer, your recommendations, please.
Okay. We have a present, a budget presentation, and Andrew, my budget director, and Ahmet, Assistant Treasurer, will present.
All right, we'll make this quick so everyone can leave, but. Just so on the first slide, whenever it's up, just by way of introduction, you all approve two things, pretty much, whenever we do anything with the budget. The first being the appropriations, which are just budgetary expenditures, so what the district's gonna have going out. And then estimated receipts, which is anything that's coming in. Part of estimated receipts includes estimated resources, which is any estimated revenue or anything we get, plus whatever we have, like, in our fund balances in the bank. By way of like legal authorizations and stuff, a lot of the budgetary requirements are in O R C five seven oh five. The first slide shows that the appropriations can't exceed those estimated resources. So once we get it approved by you all, we send it to the county, the county certifies that last section there that our appropriations are underneath our estimated resources. So if you go to slide two, there are some more additional legal requirements that we have to be aware of. By July first, we have to either have a permanent or a temporary appropriation measure passed. So a temporary budget would be expenditures that go for about three months, July through September, as opposed to a permanent budget, which would be for the full year. If you do a temporary, the permanent has to be approved by the first day in October. And then when you prove the appropriations, that comes at a fund level, which is that last paragraph on there. So if you move on to the next slide, for fiscal year twenty five, this kind of shows how much in total. This is all funds, so the total estimate would be four hundred and seven point five million. Now, in June, you might, this is a draft, so you'll see a little bit of changes with the special revenue funds, just because we're not completely sure what our fund balance will be at the end of the year. And then if you go to the next slide, this is general fund only, broken down by programs, so regular instruction, extracurricular children, so on, for a total of two hundred and sixty two point five million. Regular instruction makes up about twenty nine percent of the total budget, which is our largest portion of it. And then you'll see a lot throughout for the other funds and general fund, an increase due to COVID ending this, or COVID money, or E S R, ending this year. So next year, the general fund has to absorb a lot of the costs back that we've put into E S R over the past couple of years. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the budgeted full-time equivalent, which is a fancy way of saying our position budget, for a total of one thousand nine hundred and forty six employees, and then the dollar amount with that. Of that one thousand nine hundred and forty six, it's an increase of approximately three hundred and ninety one positions over this current year, and of that three hundred and seventy, these were E S R related funded positions for the past couple of years that we're bringing back onto the general fund. And then if you go to the next slide, so these are the positions that we were able to pay through E S R for this year and stuff, and have found a different funding source through a grant for next year, so that our general fund doesn't have to pick up those costs. There's about twenty four of those positions. Then if you go to the next slide, this just shows a kind of comparison for the past couple of years, for a total just of the general fund. The only thing to note on here, you can see a large increase from twenty two to go into the remaining of the years. Twenty two had, this all includes advances and transfers. Fiscal year twenty two had advances and transfers of about seven point four million budget in there, whereas fiscal year twenty three has about twenty six point seven, and twenty four will have twenty two point five and probably some more as we go into June. And what those advances and transfers do is anything for like Welcome Stadium, anything we transfer to the permanent improvement fund, and then advances to cover our grant fund balances at the end, at the year end. And then if you go to the next slide, this details operations and athletic budgets. The reason I broke these out is because they have other funds associated with their budgets. So the first part of these are their normal general fund stuff, and then you can see in operations, permanent improvement has Fund O O three, which is what we can use for any like long-term capital projects, so like HVAC or anything like that, we do the buildings. And then athletics has Fund Three Hundred and Fund O One Three that they are able to use as well. Then that's it, and any questions?
Appreciate you for your presentation. I'm opening it up for the board, any questions?
Yes.
Number one.
Number one question, do we need a levy?
That's up to the, I agree on the board and decide.
Yes, we do, and need a levy, because we are looking at deficit on the fourth year. So the levy, we have to start thinking about that one, whether it's next year to go to a levy or the following year.
Okay, so we're not asking for one this year? I mean, that's, that's my honest question for you guys.
I think it's up to the board, basically. We're, we're spending about two hundred and sixty two million dollars as appropriations in the general fund for fiscal year twenty five. We will only bring in about two hundred and fifteen million dollars, so you know, you're looking about a, about a forty five million dollar deficit, fifty five. And, sorry, depending on the deficit, like, you know, the larger the deficit gets in coming years, the more the levy amount gets, so you know, if we get one this year, we need a smaller levy to cover it, because today is, we, I don't think we can ask for a levy for fifty five million, but let's say it's ten, fifteen million dollar, in three years, it will be forty five million dollars. If we ask for a fifteen million dollar levy next year, in two years, it will only raise thirty million dollars, so we have that fifteen million behind the, for, the longer we wait for a levy.
Okay, and would this be for operations, or would it be for, what's that one, capital improvement?
We can balance it out, I think we can go for bo, both. Right now, operations are supported by the operating levy, so you know, we can move some of that cost over there, or we can, it can give them some extra money to spend on capital improvements, and the rest could be for operations, we'll leave both.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mister Lacy?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, a little, one, one thing, like on slide four, it, it talks about appropriations and it just shows funds. Now, the actual appropriation that we've had in the past years have been, for the general fund, it's been at the program level, and then the rest of the funds, it's at the fund level. Is it, are you proposing, you're not, are you proposing to change that? Is it, is it general?
No, that's just the Ohio admin code that says what our like minimum legal level of control is.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, and and, and to make this budget, we're not recommending a riff of any kind or anything like that, of course.
This, so this includes all of the requested, so the way the budget process kind of works here is we get requests from the departments for next year, and then we go through and look at like staffing and non-payroll and everything. This, the two sixty two million includes all the requested staffing from the departments.
And, and this budget, of course, also reflects that we are going from a budget that's assisted by E S Rs, whatever E S R stands for, the, yeah, and, and going to a budget. As of September, of course, or October, without E S Rs.
Yes.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Mister Walker.
Just, just for clarification, what's the difference between the Montessori pairs and the other classroom pairs?
Montessori has one in each individual room, because they're multi-age, and so it's, you know, they're used for supports, unlike regular classrooms, where you just have one teacher.
Thank you for that, and then I actually think that was my only, only question.
Okay, anyone else? I would say, once again, appreciate that, and I do want to put something there for Madam Treasurer, Superintendent, and Doctor Jones to be constantly working on this as we go over some of the things that we talked about under our superintendent recommendations, and working to look at what this looks like as we head into October and needing to approve a finalized budget. So I appreciate the work and the teamwork, and I just encourage that continuation and that work and that transparency to continue, so we can put us in a great standing that we need to be in, appreciate the work done thus far. Appreciate you, gentlemen, thanks for what you do every day in the district.
Thank you.
Moving on, we do have a new business. I recommend the approval of following board member will travel on expense, do I have a?
Second.
There's been a second, any questions? On the motion?
It wasn't actually a motion, you said I recommend.
I recommend that that is a, that is a motion. Whatever. Do, any questions on, you got a question, Mister Walker? I, I move to accept it, Mister Walker. Now I'm gonna just vote no. Do I have a second?
I've already seconded.
Yeah, he's, she's seconded. Any questions? All right, oh, no, I'm voting no. May we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yeah.
Miss Wick.
Yes.
Doctor Goodwin.
Yes.
Doctor Bailey.
Yes.
Mister Lacy.
Yes.
Mister Walker.
Yes.
Miss Reina.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Do we still need to bring back the East End thing? Or is that just something they can fix and just bring back?
You can add that in if you want, go ahead.
Hold on, we got a motion on.
It's a motion on the floor.
It's been second, I removed my second.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Removed it, can remove the motion, who do we count for the motion?
Care.
I removed my motion.
All right. Now, would you like to put out a motion to reconsider?
I would like to put out a motion to reconsider the East End Community Service Contract to reflect the addition of the Board of Education in the language for the principal selection process.
So first, we'd have to.
First guy did reconsider.
First that, it's the motion to reconsider, I'll second your motion to reconsider, Mister Walker.
Do we have any questions, comments? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Miss Wick.
Yes.
Doctor Goodwin.
Yes.
Doctor Bailey.
Yes.
Mister Lacy.
Yes.
Mister Walker.
Yes.
Miss Reina.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Now, do we have a new motion?
Yes, so I would like to motion to approve the contract with East End Community Service with the addition of the Board of Education for the selection of the principal process.
I'll second that.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
Can you make the motion just a little bit more clear?
I was pulling up the contract. So the motion would be to revise our, to add on in section A of the East End contract, the, in section A, item three, includes decisions about principal selection. All decisions will be presented to the Superintendent and Board of Education for final approval.
Okay, so you're adding, we're adding in, and Board of Education.
And Board of Education, and I don't, in section A, item three.
One more question, has this M O U been signed already?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's a signed M O U, how are we able to retract it? Or dissolve it to do that? I mean, that's a legitimate.
I said legal walked out.
Alex, can you come back real quick? We have a signed M O U that we are looking to amend a section, how, how could we do that? Can we shoot us you guys to figure out? Okay. Okay.
So since the motion to reconsider was approved, then I would just ask to table this to our first review session?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, so I would just ask to table that East End contract to the first review session.
That's a good one, I, since we're on signatures today, I signed, but President Smith has not signed.
Miss Kidd, has, has the M O U been sent over? Okay, so we're good to go.
So we're good to go.
Executed.
Who needs you?
Never mind. We always need you, Alex. All right, good to go.
All right, I would, did you second the motion, you're not having nobody second the motion yet? She had a question.
No, I seconded too, and you can't talk about it until it gets seconded.
Did you second it?
You gotta pay attention.
I hear. I hear. I'll talk to you after the meeting. Maybe we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Entertaining a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second. Too late, I get after Dr. Bailey. May I have a vote? Goodwin, then Bailey. Walker did not get in on that one, do not put Walker's name down. Walker does not matter right now.
Okay. President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Dr. Goodwin, did you get the text from Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson, he just passed the C D L.